All this meeting to order. Did you stand for the fudging lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeBoer.
Here.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Teelander.
Here.
And Mayor Althaus.
Here.
I'd like approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple changes to the agenda. Under whole business, 6A, I'd like to add item retain special legal counsel to handle a matter in which the city has an interest pursuant to the Lowell City Charter, section 7.7. I would also like to move letter E, discussion of continuing personnel issues, up to item B.
And then move everything else down.
Everything else down to B.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Let's do a roll call vote, then.
Mayor Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
No.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And motions, uh, 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 what did I say there? The motion was-
Carry.
Carry. The next thing to do is approving the minutes from the preceding meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second the motion to approve it.
And a second, or motion and a second to approve the meeting to the regular meeting on January 4th, 2016. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althaus?
Yes. And that was, that moved through, one approved. The next thing is the council payable.
Make a motion that we approve the council payable as well.
I'd second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve council payable. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
It's been approved, so moving on to citizens' discussions for items not on the agenda.
Perry Beecham resides at 924 Riverside Drive. I'm just gonna read, so I don't get off. I just want to point out a few things with regards to the city manager position. I've read that the council, or some of the council, is thinking of terminating the current city manager, Mr. Howe. My question to you is, since the election and the new council being seated, has Mr. Howe gone against your direction or policies? The city manager is an employee of the city and answers to the council and the direction and policies of the council. As an employee of the city, Mr. Howe only followed the direction of the previous council. An election occurred and new council members were seated, and the city manager is now following the direction of the new council. I have not read or heard of the city manager going against the policies of the new or previous council. I would ask that the council show where Mr. Howe violated the direction of the council before termination. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Kent. I live at 1700 Fayette Drive in Lowell. I'd like to concur with the comments made here of the previous speaker. And I am also somewhat concerned about, I'm more concerned about the procedure that was followed at the last meeting regarding hiring a special counsel and addressing the personnel matter. There was a lot of discussion about being more open and transparent, and I'm hoping that maybe today you can clarify that a little more. I'm not really here to challenge your authority to take whatever action you need with city staff, but I'm just hopeful that you can follow a procedure to do that in the interest of the person affected, as well as the image of the city itself. Again, the, you know, the city manager, as was stated previously, reports to the city council, and I think the city council needs to, needs to make sure that due process is followed regarding whatever action you take with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond, and also in favor, based on what I've heard the other two people speak. So I look at the council, I recognize that there are only two of you who have really worked with Mark. And, you know, I've had an opportunity to work with Mark, and I recognize then, because there's only two of you, and then also the sudden wanting to add another employee to the city from your last meeting, which seemed to be an agenda item that just was pulled out someplace and laid before people without any preparation. I'm really hoping that that's not the style that this council's going to go on. You represent me. I'm part of this city. I'm Roger Luewer. I live at 681 Birchwood Court. I know many of you from different things that I've done within the city. And I recognize that if you are to vote against keeping the city manager we have at this point, it's either you're working off a, three of you are working off a hearsay based on some, what somebody else has told you, rather than your own experience with Mark, or you've tried to put yourself on the council for some reason that is not necessarily to the benefit of those of us who live within this community. So I'm going to encourage you, as a council, to take some time to work with Mark. Let's do this the right way. Let's use process that is indeed not making us a lacking stock of every small community within, in Michigan, and begin to figure out the ways that you can work together and with good policy, rather than trying to bring more expense to our budget to bring in somebody from outside to do the work that you have really been voted to do, which is to evaluate our, our leadership, work with our leadership, and make some decisions with that leadership. So I encourage you to do that. Again, I'm Roger Luewer from 681 Birchwood Court. Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ray.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I also received an email today. If you would like me to read that aloud?
I would like you to read that, please.
Okay. I received an email today from retired city clerk Betty Morlock, and I'll read it as follows. I am not able to attend the meeting tonight due to prior commitment to the poker room sponsored by the Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to share with you what a great boss, person, and city manager Mark Howe is. He is concerned about all of his employees and citizens of the city of Lowell, as well as the community of Lowell. If you have a concern, all you need to do is sit down with him and discuss it. He will listen to you and explain how he feels and sees it, and you walk away on the same page, or you understand where he is coming from. So many times, people forget that the city manager, as well as the council, need to consider more than just the loud voices. You need to consider what is best for the entire city, and that is not an easy thing to do. Mark is great working with the budget and finding grants and so forth to better our city and its businesses. The council and Mark have been working very hard to establish a strategic plan, street plan, and sidewalk plan over the past five years. Mark nor the council can't do everything at once. That is why we have these plans. Every community in Michigan has the same street problems as we do, if not even worse than ours, and the shrinking tax monies we get from the state doesn't make Mark or the council's job easy. You are a good group, and Mark is a good manager. Please continue to work together for the entire city and its residents. Thank you for taking the time to read my email, and please consider my thoughts and opinion. We have a great city manager and council. All you need to do is talk and work together. Betty Morlock, retired city clerk of the city of Lowell in Lowell Township Residence.
Yes, there's any more, so we'll move on to whole business. And I wasn't exactly, I didn't get that all written down, what you wanted us to do, so could you explain it?
I should again, pursuant to section 7.7 of our city charter, the council, upon its own initiative, may retain special legal counsel to handle any matter in which the city has an interest. In order to ensure we are properly handling our discussion of continuing personnel issues, I move to retain special legal counsel. I've asked attorney Catherine Henry here tonight for that purpose. Specifically, I move to hire attorney Catherine Henry as special legal counsel for advising us in our discussion of continuing personnel issues at our usual hourly rate of $200.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Now, second.
Any discussion?
If I may, we have legal counsel, Mr. DeGuant. He's not here tonight because the council members have asked that he not be here, and that's a real shame, that we have legal counsel that the city does employ and, it's why Althaus still employs. And it's, I think, a mistake to proceed any further with any legal kind of work without his advisement, and I think this whole direction is not so very good.
Okay, I think before we move forward on any discussion, we could have Mrs. Henry to the podium, so she'll be able to speak as well. Do you recognize her?
Yes. First, Perry.
Well, my question is, what, $200 an hour, what do you anticipate the total cost to be? And if, don't, shouldn't you be going out to a bid situation for this? If it's going to be, I mean, if it's only $200, I understand that, but if it runs into over $5,000, which I would anticipate, I, I don't know how much that would be, but when you, I guess the council, wouldn't you have to go out for a bid situation in this case if you're going to hire somebody for their services? I mean, if we're doing floor covering, we, anytime we're doing floor covering in the city, it's in a bid situation. The mowing, you're gonna see that, bids, truck when you purchase equipment, so I would think you'd have to go to a bid situation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
Good evening, and good evening, citizens of Lowell. Obviously, as being recognized, I am Catherine Henry, and I was asked here tonight to actually do exactly what it is that I believe two or three of the citizens talked about, was making sure that procedures and policies were followed, to make sure that everything was done in a fair fashion, that things were done in an orderly fashion. And obviously, as council members, none of you, I'm sure, have memorized every aspect of OMA and all the other procedures that go along with that. You probably haven't memorized all Robert's Rules of Order and all of those things, so with all the legalities that you have on your shoulders as city council members, what hiring me would do would enable you to make sure you're staying within those parameters because, obviously, when it's a contentious issue, which started to come out at the last meeting a little bit, obviously has been coming out for quite some time in comments with the public, you just, you want to make sure that everyone's interests are protected, so you're able to represent the people of Lowell who see fit, you're able to address any issues without compromising the city manager's rights or whoever's rights it is that could be that particular personnel issue, but that you're all doing everything, all of you are doing everything within the parameters. And so, my understanding, when being asked here tonight, was to assist you all in making sure that you weren't, that none of you were going to step over, you know, a line of violating some sort of right or some sort of legal requirement. So, with that being said, there wasn't much discussion about my fees, and if the concern of the people is the cost of that, my usual hourly rate when I do hourly work is 200. It's definitely not the highest by any means in any attorney firms around here, but that can easily be changed to 100 an hour. If that's what would address some of the concerns of the people, I believe it was at a last meeting, someone mentioned something about 150 or 140 is what the current, or prior city council, however you want, or city attorney, however you want to refer to him as, what his charges are for you guys. It's obviously less than a standard rate, so if that makes the citizens feel better about that, that's fine. And my usual procedure is quarter hourly increments, because humans don't think in .2 or .1 hours, that's not how we think. So, at any rate, I, as far as trying to address the, how much the total bill might be, any hourly work, it's hard to say. It just depends on how long this meeting goes and any wrap-up questions or things you might have, any issues that need to be taken care of after this meeting, or if I'm requested at another meeting, obviously that would all go into that. So, with that being said, if anybody, you know, if any of you council members had any questions about how I do any of that, I'd be happy, happy to answer them, either from here or, I'm not sure how exactly your recording devices are set up, I can just say that it makes you guys more comfortable to allow citizens to come up, but either way, I'm available.
If I may? Ms. Henry, what is your legal background? I mean, there's all kinds of different areas of law. Are you first in municipal labor? What's, what's your degree? What's, what's your area specialty?
Well, a law degree is a law degree. So, I mean, just to answer that, the last question you asked first. So I have a law degree from William Mitchell College of Law, which has now merged with Hamlin University School of Law, so Mitchell-Hamlin is the new school name, but anyway, that's where my degree is, and I have, of course, the bachelor's that I received before that. And I can't even tell you the hundreds of hours of continuing legal education that I've done since that time. When I was an attorney in Minnesota, it was a requirement. Here in Michigan, attorneys don't have a requirement to do continuing legal education, but I continue to do dozens of hours every year. In terms of the breadth of my practice in terms of topics that I've covered, when my practice was in Midland, it was a general practice firm. So I've done everything dealing with issues of municipal nature, to criminal, divorce, landlord-tenant, collections, bankruptcy. I mean, I'm sure I'm leaving stuff out, but I've dealt with a lot of those issues, and even since then, I've dealt with a lot of OMA, FOIA issues, issues pertaining to city charters and city ordinances, and also having served on local city boards, obviously not Lowell's, because I don't live here. I have that familiarity and understanding and just logistical concepts of how to go back and forth between statutes, which obviously take precedence, and then city charter, and then ordinance and resolutions. So I hope that answers your question. If it doesn't, please let me know.
Oh, well, the, I'm really adhering towards your, your background in municipal law, as well as labor law.
I guess what specifically, I, I've handled those issues, so I don't know what you want me to say. I can't talk about my clients.
So you've appeared in court, you've testified, you've given ownership.
I don't testify on those issues, no.
You've represented other cities in legal matters?
I, I won't identify clients. I didn't get permission ahead of time to identify clients, but I can tell you that I've handled these issues in courts of law, both state courts and federal courts in Michigan.
Usually things that handle that are involved with cities are covered by all the Meetings Act, and-
I'm just telling you-
I don't think there would be a record of that, and that you would have at least a list of-
I'm not getting engaged in an argument. I've answered your question.
I'm just asking a question.
And I answered that, and I have, I have handled these issues both in state courts in Michigan and in the federal courts of Michigan. So beyond that, I don't have permission to go into the scope or the specifics, other than I've handled OMA issues, labor issues, all kinds of employment issues from a variety of angles.
So you're not representing any municipalities that you can name?
I'm not going to name any clients, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might also ask, though, that, wouldn't these be the responsibilities of Mr. Went? Keep in mind that Mr. Went is employed by the city council to represent all of the citizens of the city council, not a particular employee, and he will, he works on behalf of the city and the city council. And when Mr. Howe was hired, Mr. Went represented the city in negotiating a contract with Mr. Howe. Mr. Howe also had his own attorney, which represented Mr. Howe and worked with Mr. Went on developing a contract. Again, Mr. Went represents the city of Lowell in our best interests, and I would defer that Mr. Went is the city attorney.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that, do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, could you come up to the podium, please?
I'm Diane Luewer. I live at 681 Birchwood Court in Lowell. I believe, I recognize the attorney that you were involved in the belding situation, and I certainly would not want us to get into that type of, I don't know what I would call it, but I know it was a big problem in belding, and I just wouldn't want us to get into that situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still going to state our addresses?
No. Oh, you did.
John Francis. I think you guys were voted by the people to make your own decisions, to do your own direction, as far as what people want. I mean, everybody in the past that was sitting on this council, mayors, everybody else, got to choose and pick what they wanted to do for this town. Some things have worked, some things haven't worked, but I think the people that voted you in there want you to make your own decisions, what you guys want to do, your own direction, and not have a handful of people try to detour you from the people that elected you to do your job. You guys all have your own individual opinions, your own individual facts, and you guys should be able to make your own decisions. I think you guys are doing a great job starting out, and I hope you guys continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a, and a second?
I'll second.
It's moved and supported, or seconded to move forward with hiring?
Mr. Mayor, could I, here, Jack, here, real quick. There's a couple things that, I know the city attorney is not here. I'm not a lawyer, but I've been a police officer for 22 years. When it comes to labor law, I have to look out for the best interest of the municipality. One thing that we have to be considerate of is the employees' interests, which would be Mr. Howe, the employer's interests, which would be the city, and that's all the citizens, and preventing mistakes. So my-
And that is why we are hiring the council?
I understand that. Some of you ran on the issue of transparency as well, and I think it would be to the interest of the city council to know that Ms. Henry and her husband are friends with the labor representative of the Department of Public Works. I think that would be a conflict of interest to hire her. If your interest is to hire an attorney outside of Mr. Went, there are several other attorneys that specialize in labor law that, right in this area, would be available. I just think it's a conflict of interest to have Ms. Henry be your representative in this matter.
Thank you for your-
Can I say something, please? I'm sorry.
Okay.
I already had a first and a second.
Yeah, okay.
Earlier, okay.
Thank you. All right, it's just, it was a little, I'm new with this, I get to make mistakes, so, thank you. Then, roll call vote?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
No.
Motion carried. Mr. Howe, you may be excused now. Thank you. No, excuse me. That, that is, sorry about that. Second thing?
The city has had a lot of contention over city manager Howe and his actions in the last few years. These issues have been discussed in both public meetings and among, among the public generally. Given recent events, I've reviewed our city charter, which states, "The city and its officers shall have the power to do any act to advance the interests, good government, and prosperity to the city and its inhabitants, to protect public peace and general welfare. The city manager shall be responsible to serve at the pleasure of the council. The mayor shall preside at council meetings and shall be a conservator of the peace. The council itself shall provide for public peace and health and safety of persons and property, investigate municipal affairs, and when deemed necessary, any office or department of the city. The council shall see that the provision is made for the public peace. The city manager shall serve at the pleasure of and be subject to removal by the council. The city manager shall perform the duties of his office under the authority of and be accountable to the council. It shall be the duty of the city manager to see that all laws and ordinance are enforced." Like's Law Dictionary defines "serving at the pleasure of" as "the assignment of someone to an appointment that can be taken away at any time with no requirement for a notice or hearing." So considering our duties to provide for the public peace, and considering the continuing actions taken in the last few years, I move that Mark Howe be immediately removed from office of city manager, and that this termination be considered because of any illegal or criminal act or breach of the terms and conditions of the employment contract. And also that Mrs. Henry is now available for questions.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all that dialect.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. For what Mike just read, roll call vote, please. Any discussion?
Thank you. You're making a big mistake.
Thank you, Jim.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Again, Roger Luewer, attorney. You know, the, if you think about what you're doing here, which I, you know, I'm really surprised, and quite frankly, I'm surprised that, that we are at this point with so little that any of you have really worked with, with Mark. I'm hearing that, I understand the charter, I've read that myself. I understand that you obviously have some citations you would like to read that show the, what he has violated in the contract. We aren't hearing any of that right now, it just sounds to me like, basically, we've got kind of a kangaroo court going on here, because I, Al, I haven't heard anything from you either in terms of the actual charges that would merit removing an individual from office immediately and disregarding anything with family or anything else. with family or anything else. I mean, you don't really care about that, obviously. If we're going to be moved right away, I mean, this is really, and, you know, for one who is listening to this, who is very much a part of this city, you know, it says to me that I'm really wondering where we're going to be going for two years if this is the kind of way you're going to operate. I'm really surprised that the ones that I know on here, and I've seen that, that it would actually work this way. And I would have you really reconsider what you're doing, not whether or not you like Mark, that's not the issue here, of course, except it might be, because we don't know, because I'm not hearing any concrete violations that we're talking about here, and I don't think anybody else is hearing that. So you're going to just go ahead and do this? Now, I, I mean, you're actually going to go ahead and do this without presenting any kind of reasons why you will be doing this? When there's some of us who work with this man, and we work with him in various ways, and we haven't run into this kind of contention until tonight, and we've heard it from other places, but not because of him, what we're hearing in terms of what people are saying. Now, I want you to, I wish you would really reconsider this. I hope this is published. I'm wishing you would reconsider this, and that you would begin to do some research and present your case. If there is a case here, let's present it, rather than just moving on something on hearsay, because basically that's what you've given us, is hearsay, when you've read that. You said, "Oh, we hear this rumors within the community, people have talked." What are we saying that merits the removal of a leader from office in this manner? Now, think about that. I'm really, really asking you to do that, because I think this is all the wrong direction. Now, if you're going to remove him, you can do that, but let's get a case out here, okay? What's the case? We don't know that. We're not hearing that, because we're not part of the rumor. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember T. Lander?
Yes.
Mayor Eltav?
I want to qualify that yes to remove, in case anybody didn't, wasn't clear on the motion.
Mayor Eltav?
Yes, and that is to remove from office?
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
No.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passed. Please, please, no. Item C, Strategic Goals Report. I think we'd like to table that tonight.
Motion to table.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All.
Motion passed. Item D, Pending Council Project Reports. Motion to table.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Excuse me, can you make sure you're giving them discussion and putting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is anyone back up here? Does anyone want to discuss any of this?
I think we've had the information presented to us. I think we could accept it. I don't know why we would table it. I don't see how-
The training you're talking about, training and information, or the pending council projects?
Yes, the pending council projects is what we're currently discussing.
Okay. All right, discussion, Jim?
I don't see whether there would be any change in that between now and two weeks from now, when we would be getting the very same report all over again, unless there was other direction, other updates from a city manager. I think we could accept that, both the strategic goals reports and both the pending council reports, as they have been presented to us.
Okay. Sorry, I did something wrong. And so, let's take another. Should we bring that back up then, Jim?
If you passed it, you really should not move back.
Okay, all right, let's, unless-
You couldn't do it.
Okay, then let's move forward with what we are on right now. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, are we on council training now, guys, or?
I think the pending projects are-
Pending projects. And I'm sorry for that. Okay. Pending Council Projects, Underground Electrical Lines. There's no further update on that, but I do have some discussion on that. I don't think it was, we have gotten enough information from Lowell Light and Power on this, so I would like to make sure that we give a memo to them that we need an update on this by the next, this council meeting or the next council meeting. Greg's here, or was, but, is Greg here?
Here.
Greg, could we get an update on that?
I'll get you something by next week.
What's that?
They'll get us something.
Thank you. The trash ordinance update? I don't know how the, is the planning commission working on that? No?
We worked on a lot of stuff, but I was sick that night and struggled through it, but I don't remember a lot of discussion on that.
Right-of-way ordinance?
I don't think Mr. Went is here to discuss that, is he?
Okay, so-
He was going to start that discussion on the ordinance, correct?
Correct. Okay, so, we don't have to do anything with that, so... City Council Training Information. Anybody have any input on that?
Greg, we have you Light and Power for February 1st. Are we still on? Other than that, okay. Obviously, I would think that the training for tonight was probably scrapped, and then we'll continue February 1st with Greg's presentation, and then, Ron, are we going to be good for?
The equipment replacement?
Yeah, the equipment replacement plan. That'll get us to that February meeting, and then we can, okay.
Okay, discussion of the equipment purchase that we tabled from the last meeting.
I'm under the impression that the door has been replaced, on the skid steer?
The door is here. We are waiting for hardware to be delivered. It came with additional hardware, so it's here, but-
Do we have a timeframe on the hardware kit? Is that available?
It should be here any time.
When, when we do get that, that piece of equipment, or that, the part for that piece of equipment, does the heater in that piece of equipment work well enough to keep the windshield defrosted? And the operator that's running it, at a temperature that he could actually stand when it's this cold out?
I can't answer. I don't know the operation of that heater, and how it works, I don't know.
I wasn't in favor of purchasing that windshield for the piece of equipment that's valued at roughly only $3,500. There was some extra money in the budget that was basically extra from someplace, and I still think that it would be the smartest thing to do with that piece of equipment, would be to replace it and take that, that money that we're going to spend on that windshield and the labor and the, and the rest of the parts, and put it, put it on the purchase of a new piece of equipment.
We have, we physically have the door, correct?
We have the door.
And then the labor on the installation can be done in-house?
Sure.
Okay. I would, you know, I'd like to see if we can at least get through with it as it is, and maybe when we come to the next budget, we update the long-term equipment plan, maybe address purchasing you at that time. I'd like to, I mean, if we've already acquired the parts and the labor can be done in-house, I'd like to see if we can at least limp through it before we lay out any more money, especially we have a budget coming up here in three months that we're going to take a look at, and that'll give us time to update that long-term equipment plan.
Mayor, I have a hard time putting a $3,000 door on a $3,500 machine. I think that that $3,000 would go better toward a down payment of a new machine, and I would like to maybe table this discussion, so we can do some more research on whether we need, we should consider purchasing a different, newer skid steer, and just hold off on installing that door, because my understanding is if we install that door, we can't return it. Right now, we do have the ability to return it.
I don't know if you need a motion on that, but that's-
I, yeah.
What, what do we do with old equipment? Are we going to try and sell it? Will we keep it? I mean, what's the process of that?
The price that we receive from Carlton Equipment is a trade-
Oh, it's a trade, okay, thank you.
But that price is including that door being replaced, correct? Or that is without the new door?
I believe the price that they gave us was $3,500 without the door and $4,000 with the door.
And is there more value in a private auction? And if so, what's the additional, do you have any idea on the additional timeframe if we went to a public auction? Would we stand to make enough money that, so not enough money that it would be worth?
I wouldn't think so with that piece of equipment, no.
So, would you like to table this, then?
How old is that piece of equipment, Ron?
Well, that's 1994.
So if we got a new one, we'd be looking at about 20, 25 years of service?
Potentially, yes.
So we've gotten pretty much all of it that we can?
I would say yes, yeah.
And hoping that it is safe enough for our employees to be out in it, working?
It is currently.
Okay, it's safe. Well, did you make a motion to table it? Because I think, I think we do need to look into it, obviously.
I don't think you, yeah, we had a lot of the years and hours of use discussion, I think, when you were sick, so, like, would we have to go look at the equipment physically?
I just, I just want to-
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
That's my-
I think you have a lot more knowledge about that than the rest of us do.
Okay.
I would love to look at it.
All right, so let's table-
Motion to table until Jeff has a chance to come up.
Okay. A second?
Do we need to vote on that?
Do we have to have a vote on that, to table it?
I believe so.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to table the discussion on the purchase? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember T. Lander?
Yes.
Mayor Eltav?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Motion carried. New business. Mowing bids. Could I get you to read that for us? Sue?
Sure. All right, this is regarding the mowing bids. We have secured bids for mowing parks and other public areas within the city for the next three years. There were three responses to our request for bids. The first one was Manzesski Landscaping in Lowell for $28,800 per year. Green Thumb Lawn and Landscape from Serenac, $39,312 per year. And Zax Lawn Care in Lowell, $39,600 per year. Our current contract has been with Zax Lawn Care for a total of $26,520 per year. Staff went through the process of reviewing areas to be mowed and added some areas to the current bid. We have had previous experience with Manzesski, which has been positive, and we are recommending approval of the low bid.
I'll make a motion to approve their bid for three years.
Do we need any discussion?
Have to, have to, have to.
Okay. I'll, I'll second the motion to approve the Manzesski landscaping bid.
I have a motion and a second to approve this. Any, any discussion? I have some, Ron, and this will be for you. There's quite a bit of difference in, in the bids, and does he, does he, does he know that that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how there could be that much of a difference, you know, and the other two aren't too far apart, but I'm just, you know, I will go along with it, but it's, I mean, we were sort of like $2,000 more than what they were getting, so that's, I was just questioning that, so it must be that he was bidding apples for apples, that's all I was wondering, so.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah.
I was present during the bid opening, and Manzesski Landscaping was the only company present.
Okay, well then, all right, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Eltav?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember T. Lander?
Yes.
Motion carried. Snow plow, plow truck replacement? Do you want to read that?
Okay. Plow truck replacement. Staff has been researching and preparing for the replacement of a plow truck, as that is the next priority on the equipment replacement plan. Attached is a memo from the interim DPW Director Ron Woods, providing background information on the issue.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move the way to replace the plow truck as presented.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
It takes quite a while to build one of those things, doesn't it?
Yes, it takes quite a while to build it, and all of the manufacturers, the state memorandum, all the manufacturers in the state are very busy. Quite a bit of pent-up quest for this type of equipment, municipalities are seeing the need to replace equipment. Municipalities are seeing the need to replace equipment with the economy improving, so they're very busy.
So that is a year out?
That's about a year out, is what they told us, yes.
Then did we, well, your staff, did they put the wing plow on the new truck? Or the truck trailer, is it?
Right, not yet.
Not yet.
And this is similar to what Kev did with their replacement plan?
Yes, it was.
And it's through an ideal for us, so it's a...
The cabin chassis is a competitive bid, and the box, you know, the other components through ideal pricing.
I have a motion and a second to replace the plow truck. Roll call vote?
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes. Motion passed.
This is in regards to the brewing ordinance. The Planning Commission has held a public hearing and has recommended an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would define a brewery winery, allowing a restaurant to include a brewery winery as an accessory use, and allow a brewery winery as a special land use in the T-3 General Business District, and as a use permitted by right in the industrial district.
I'll motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I visited with a couple of business owners, specifically some pub owners here in town. I, at first, was very concerned with provisional licenses. But in talking to these owners, they're in favor of anything that would bring people to our community. If people are coming to the community, they're stopping in. And the more people we bring, the better their businesses are. So I recommend, too, that we, I was on, I'm on the Planning Commission right now. I don't know about either, after we choose our members. But for now, I totally agree with that thought.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Item D, Big Boiler Brewing Company Job Creation Grant.
Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, has issued a letter of interest to the city of Lowell for a job creation grant in the amount of $210,000 for a big boiler brewing company project to be located in the form of a superior furniture building. The total project is currently estimated at 1.026 million. The job creation grant is required to flow through the city of Lowell and will require that we take a number of steps throughout this process. It will also require a local commitment of 5% to 10% of the project. That local commitment can be in the form of local grants, such as a historic commission grant, commercial tax abatements, or payment with the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, eligible expenses through the tax increment finance, TIF capture. We are planning to discuss these options with the Historic District Commission and the Downtown Development Authority at their next meetings. How has been working with the MEDC on the initial paperwork and grant application packet that will be required in order to receive the grant? If the application is approved, a grant agreement will be developed and presented to you for consideration and option. At this point, we would like to have formal approval to proceed with the grant application, authorize appropriate signatures on the application and other required paperwork. The recommended motion is that the Lowell City Council authorize the city manager to prepare a job creation grant application for a big boiler brewing company project, and to authorize appropriate signatures on the application and other related paperwork.
Any discussion?
As a work in progress that is now stopped, I am concerned about that. I read this before we made our motions prior, but this is something that we need to keep pushing forward. And I don't know if the mayor, if you have any ideas on how to keep this pushing forward?
Yeah. We will make sure it gets taken care of.
How? I mean, it says, you have to have a city manager. You voted that out.
Yeah.
No.
Police chief?
No, if somebody has a comment, you may.
If they have a comment, would you just direct him to come up here?
I think he's made his comment. I think if we work with the DDA and the city attorney and Sue, I think we can continue the grant process as we've been doing it. We need to ask for help. Will we be able to ask for help?
Okay. Roll call vote?
Okay, so we're tabling this item?
No, no, we're moving through with it.
We're going through with it, okay. I'm sorry I missed that motion.
Okay, all right, motion. Didn't you do it? I could have given a motion.
I'll make a motion that we just continue with the job creation grant application without assigning it to one person.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Table, item number E, Strategic Plan Overview. Want to table that?
Motion to table.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to table the Strategic Plan Overview. Roll call vote, please.
Jeff?
For discussion. Barry?
Barry Beal from 924 Riverside Drive. So I guess I'm, I'm, do you have a plan? I mean, are you, do you have an interim in mind? Are you going to go and, because I'm seeing all these things that you're going to, you have to delay, you have to table, you have to table this, you have to table that. Have you thought out of a plan of an interim of a city manager? Have you put together, obviously, you've had this pre-arranged. So have you put together a thought of a new hiring process? Are you going to go out and hire anybody? Are you going to, I mean, what's your plan? Because I'm frustrated in that all of a sudden I see you putting all these things, tabling it, and you got another meeting in two weeks? I can just see, okay, we're going to table a bunch more stuff, that nothing's going to get done because you haven't thought ahead.
Thank you, Barry.
I'd like to make a comment to that.
You can.
I have been writing for, since 2012.
Lies!
There you go. And I've been, I've been writing, and I've been researching, and I'm not coming into this lightly. So I just want you to know, you come to the next meeting, and you'll see if we're organized or not. If we're table, everything like you're suggesting.
Enough, Barry. Because we're not discussing that anymore. That part's done.
What part's done? The part of bottom line, saying that writing lies about me? That the only reason I went to jury?
Barry, we're not going to make this personal. We've gone the whole.
It's not going to make it personal?
We just made it personal.
Mr. Teelander makes it personal.
Yep, he responded to what you asked him, okay? If you think we're going to table, and you don't think we're organized, you come to the next meeting, and we'll prove you wrong. And if we don't, you're free to come back up and comment again.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Monthly reports? You have all the reports. Is there any questions?
Chief, on your assisting other agencies, when you have medical on here, is that a stage situation? Do you have, or do you have that separate of, like a call in the county, requiring police first, that county has an extended EPA due?
That's usually the case, yes. And it's a call that would require police assistance.
Warden commission reports? I think, I think what we will do there is... I'm just going to go down through the ones that people said on here first. Give me a second here. Arbor board, nothing happened, did it? Downtown development was canceled. Historic district, we need a new one. Light and power board, Jim, do you have any report?
I'm not assigned to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we didn't catch this on the, on the agenda, so let's just table this for this month, and we will do it next week. And then we'll move to number 10 to appoint the appointments to the commissions and boards. And we will start out with the Arbor board. Is there anyone here that would like to be on the Arbor board?
Sure. We'd love to do that.
Downtown Development Authority, I was on that, but it's a hard one for me to make because it's at lunchtime, we're in the middle of the... Historic district?
Who do they need?
I believe they need the four Wednesday?
In the evenings?
In the evenings, the fourth Wednesday, or Historic District, I think it's, at six.
Okay, Jim? LCTV Endowment Board?
I'd be willing to serve on that.
Light and power board?
In the past, the mayor has sat in on those meetings. It's a non-voting position.
Do you want to continue that, or do you want me to do that?
I think it's best of the head honcho, if you pardon the expression, the leader of the pack, the mayor sit in on that. It's an important board. And in the past, the mayors have served on that. I would see no reason to change that.
The Lowell Recreation Authority? Take that, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Motion, or all opposed? Motion passed. Citizens appointments, we have a vacancy on the LCTV Endowment Board, and on the Planning Commission, and the Look Memorial Fund Committee, the city rep.
Again, with Look Memorial Fund, if I can help, because I'm part of that.
Yeah.
But there's currently a vacancy as a council representative to that. In the past, the mayors have sat in on that, but that's now stipulated as being a mayor position.
Thank you, Jim.
It meets four o'clock in the afternoon on a Wednesday in November, as well as in April.
I can do that. I've had experience with the... Unless you want to.
I've, I actually serve on that as a citizen.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, then we'll put Mike on there. But now, do we need, do we need another one, a community at large person? Is that what it says?
No.
No, okay, all right.
With the council appointment, I think that committee would be complete.
Yes, it is.
All right, okay. The Planning Commission, and the... Have we all done that? The Planning Commission, that one, we need to have, we need to post that, and take applications for that one.
And that goes out in the monthly newsletter. It's posted on our website.
Okay.
I'll say for the Endowment Board?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, and I would hope that we could get people to, you know, to apply for them positions, and maybe we can fill in time on that.
I didn't see that we did a Planning Commission appointment from the council. Is that something that, since I've been serving, am I just on that council, that board now?
Yeah, yep. The one, the one board, Mike, Mike is filling Lowell Area Recreation Authority?
I'm not taking your spot, right? You're going to be there as well still as a citizen?
But the term on that one, you're actually filling, finishing out Jim Hall's term, right? Isn't that how it was explained? Yeah. So that's why that one's shorter. And the other thing, I would like to step down. I'm on Parks and Rec Board, and I'd like to step down from that one.
When does that meet, Sue?
Parks and Rec, they just met right before this meeting. So it'll be the third Tuesday at 6:00.
I'll take your spot on that, if you want.
Okay. That sort of fits in with the lower, the recreation.
Yeah, I'd like to keep them both together.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, previous councils, at least for the last eight years, chose to do a coffee with council on Saturday mornings. It was my understanding that someone else had other ideas that might better serve our community, and having conversations with the community. So you might need to select a person to motherhand that, as well as find a date, location, time, so forth. I've done that for seven years. I think someone else could take a turn at that.
I'd be interested in that as well, if nobody is opposed. I'll fatherhand it, though, if that's okay?
I will.
Okay, now, so we'll put you in charge.
Who was your appoint person on that? I'm sorry.
It was me.
I mean, when you made contact with senior neighbors or Schneider Manor?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you get me in touch with those people?
I will, senior volunteer. Sure. Tara, I'm not gonna last name, but I have a Tara.
Yeah, I, I, all right, I'll get with you later, and then we come out on that information.
But it's already on the schedule for this coming month, I think, so.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll have something, I'll have some data, so I know about the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Keep doing this. Council comments? Oh, I think we skipped that one. Oh, wait a minute, he does have a minute.
You need a motion to, no, the citizen appointments? And the Parks and Rec Board, and the coffee with council chairman?
So I'll make a motion to approve the citizen appointments?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm just, I have a motion to table seven.
It's eleven.
Eleven, I mean.
I would suggest, I mean, yeah, uh, we could, we could accept the report, uh, give it to us.
Could you read that to us for us, Sue?
This is the manager's report. We are working with the engineer to finalize the bid packet for the South Monroe Parking Project. The project will include moving utilities, as well as creating a water loop. Um, that is part of our water system reliability study and general plan. In short, the water loop will create more flow for fire suppression for the buildings on the 200 block of Main Street, the south side. One section of the parking lot may need to be phased if we cannot require, acquire that parcel of property prior to commencing construction. Number two, we are also preparing the final bid package for the Monroe Street project, which includes utility work and mill and resurface of Monroe from Maine to Avery. This will be combined with the South Monroe Parking Project above to take advantage of economies of scale and perhaps save some money. We are conducting an internal staff review of our cemetery rules. Once we have completed our internal review, we will bring in recommended changes to you for consideration. We wanted to get the word out that we are reviewing these rules and looking for public input and feedback prior to our recommendations to you. Please help us spread the word that we go through this process, and that we welcome any comments or suggestions. People may contact us at City Hall, 817-8457.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, in the past, we've not made motions or, uh, it's a, it's a report, and I think we can just take it at face value.
All right, thank you, Jim, for that. Council comments? Mr. Hages?
I did have some communications, uh, last night with the citizen, Chris Weller, who's interested in, uh, being involved in some of our street discussions, and so I just leave that at, at, at that, so I'd like to thank him for his involvement and willingness to participate, should we, uh, take that course and, uh, involve us citizens as we look at our streets and all that needs to be done. Basically, he's suggesting that we consider what Grand Rapids has done by having a village to increase for, for a period of time, that might, uh, help with our street repairs. Just a suggestion on his part, uh, and, uh, seems like there's a couple other things here, but, uh, I think probably, if it's good now, it'll be good in two weeks.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
No comment, I have this time.
I, uh, wanted to, what a nice turnout. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I tested, uh, at the last meeting, I, I mentioned that the Light and Power Company, if you take your incandescent bulbs in, up to five, they'll, they'll give you five LED bulbs. It's a wonderful program, and you can, you can reduce your electric bill very easily using five, five sixty watt, or LED bulbs over five sixty watt bulbs. It's, it's a good savings and a very generous offer on their part.
And Mike?
I've talked enough.
I'd like to thank everyone tonight for coming. I know it was, this was a hard thing to do, um, and have, have a good evening. I'd like a motion for eight fourteen.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a four, a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.